Good afternoon. May I have the roll call, please?
Plenary Commissioners Astorian.
Yes.
Landrigan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Yes, Zion. And Trepperson Manukian.
Here. I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, March 26, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all.
Moving on to the approval of the March 19 regular meeting minutes.
I got just a really minor thing on the continuation of the parking reduction permit case. It says Lee was abstained. Mr. Lee, but I think you voted, you voted aye, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a typo.
Yeah, that's just a minor thing.
Okay, with corrections. Moving on to oral communications, which are discussions limited to items not on part of our agenda for tonight. I have not received any pink sheets. Is there anybody here?
No.
Very good. Moving on to zoning appeals. Tonight, we are going to be discussing parking reduction permit case number PPRP 1324113, continued from our March 19, 2014 meeting. Do I have a staff overview?
Yes, Commissioner. The staff overview, as you indicated, the project is located 515 South Glendale Avenue. Business is Karina's Cake House. The applicant is requesting the reversal of the planning hearing officer's denial of the parking reduction permit to allow the expansion of the existing commercial retail bakery, a change of use of one residential unit to commercial, and eliminating the existing residential garages onsite. The applicant is proposing nine onsite parking spaces for the commercial uses and no residential parking for the remaining residential, two residential units that will remain. As proposed, the park, the project will result in a six-space parking shortfall for the commercial uses and a four-space parking shortfall for the two remaining residential units, which are required to be covered and enclosed. The location or the zone is a C3 commercial service zone, height District 1. The site is 11,370 square feet. It is developed with two separate buildings, a commercial building with two commercial tenants, which includes the subject bakery and a flower shop. And that is at the front of the lot, and a residential building with three residential dwelling units with two private and enclosed residential parking garages at the rear of the lot. One of these garages lacks enough depth to accommodate a car, but it, and it is unclear when the lack of depth came into being. So presumably, they may not be using it today as an actual, to enclose a vehicle in there. Currently, the site has, excuse me, let me backtrack. Presently, the bakery is 2,000 square feet and the flower shop is 830 square feet. With the non-conforming rights, and there is an existing variance on file, which was granted back in 1975, the required parking is nine spaces. Three of the parking spaces were to be for the residential units, and presumably, the remaining six were intended for the commercial spaces, although that's not clear in the variance approval. Nine spaces are currently provided, counting those existing shallow enclosed garages. And if the existing set of buildings and uses were constructed today, the required parking would be 17 spaces. With submittal of the application that we received, the applicant is seeking to avoid that variance that took place and approved in 1975, since the project proposes removal of the residential parking spaces. And no enclosed parking spaces are to be rebuilt for the residential units that are proposed to remain onsite. So there are no non-conforming parking rights for the residential units that predate the variance. As far as their proposal, as it relates to the addition, the project involves the conversion of the two existing residential parking garages. That would be 655 square feet. And the conversion of a dwelling, which is another 435 square feet, to bakery for bakery floor area. No residential parking spaces are provided, and the project proposes new construction of another 501 square feet for the bakery, which would make the total addition, on top of the existing 2,000 square feet, 1,591, for a total of 3,591 square feet for the bakery after construction. The flower shop will remain at 830 square feet. Assuming that 2,130 square foot of the commercial area is grandfathered in at the six spaces, the additional parking required would be four spaces for the two residential units, and then six additional spaces for the new bakery, for a total of 10 additional parking spaces. The project is proposing a total of nine parking spaces. And again, no covered and enclosed residential parking spaces for the two remaining residential units will be provided. If built today, the required parking would be 22 parking spaces. Would you like me to go into, that's again, a background and analysis of the project. At this time, would you like me to go over the summary that planning hearing officer's decision, or hear from the appellant at that time and then come back to staff?
I think we'll hear from the.
May I get a clarification from you before we move on, if you would, please? When you say that if this project is to be built today, that means raising the everything that is on it?
Correct.
You didn't get out the vehicle and then coming out and applying for a permit for the whole thing. You're going to require 22 parking spaces?
Correct.
How is that relevant to what we're discussing?
It's just giving you background information. May not be pertinent to this particular, in this particular instance, because that's not taking place. Clearly, they're not clearing their lot. But it's just to give you some numbers and get some numbers in perspective as it relates to how much you would be required if you were to build it today, how much is for the addition, just to put everything in perspective.
So, but what they're, what they're doing, the requirement is 10 parking spaces?
Correct. Their shortfall is 10.
Their shortfall is 10?
Correct.
Okay.
Six for the commercial and four for the residential.
So as is, and with the grandfather clause, you need 19 spaces?
Correct.
I thought it was 17. Where did the number 17 come from?
Okay, if the existing set of buildings and uses were constructed today, the required parking would be 17 spaces. Correct. If I may get back to you on that, so I can do some research of where that number came from in the staff report.
And then there was, oh, okay.
Let's get, let's get this straight. Is it possible that what you're talking about is if this current floor area that we have, that we have right now, plus the three residential units, all of, all of that together would be 17? Six for the residential and 11 for the bakery and the flower shop?
Correct.
But once we expand it, that's when we go to 22?
No.
No, the, the 22 is if it were built today. The 17 came from, and let me just kind of highlight some of the math that was presented in the original staff report. Again, presently, there are seven onsite spaces to serve the commercial tenants on the property, and there are two single attached private parking garages to serve the residential units. Based on the existing site uses and their square footage, a total of 17 spaces would be required if the existing mix of commercial uses were built today. That would be based on four per thousand, four spaces per 1,000 square feet of floor area. Currently, there are nine onsite parking spaces. So the existing legal non-conforming parking shortfall would be 17 minus nine for the commercial. Correct.
So your, your paragraph also says that the total of 10 additional parking spaces are required on the last paragraph. That's why with the existing nine, with the 10, you know, counting 19?
The 10 comes from that they need six for the commercial and four for the residential.
Okay.
So they have?
So that's 10?
Right. The parking shortfall is 10. They're providing nine.
So that's 19?
Six spaces for the, for the bakery addition and two, two-car garages for the remaining two residential units.
That's eight.
So that would be six plus two two-car garages. That would be 10. Six for the commercial and two two-car garages is 10.
Oh, I may, I may understand. You know, the two residential units, one of them is being converted to commercial. That's why you're counting, I think, twice. So if you take that two garage, two parking spaces for the residential, I think then it makes it 17. So I think you're counting, right now, you know, if you convert everything, you only have one residential, correct? You still have two residential?
You're, they're proposing to maintain two residential and only converting one of the residential to commercial.
So from three to two?
Correct.
Each, each residential has how much parking right now?
Well, supposedly, they have a one-car garage total.
For all three?
Or, no, there's only the two.
That's not what I saw when I was.
No, it's two units, each of which have one enclosed parking. However, one of them is not deep enough.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry.
One of the units is going to be converted as floor area for the, for the bakery.
For the commercial bakery, correct.
For the bakery.
So that's how you have 17, not, not 19?
Yeah. Okey dokey. All right. Very good. Now, may I have the appellant, please, or appellant's representative? Please note that you, your remarks are limited to 15 minutes.
I will try to stay within 15 minutes, but anyway. Good evening. My name is Carlo Nazarian, 109 East Harvard, Glendale, California. I want to discuss this, what I prepared to speak and some plans for the illustrations. Commissioners? What is the justification for our request? Karina Cake House is a small neighborhood business that has existed on this location since 1999, with no negative impact or major parking incidents within the area, providing services and employment for the local residents. It is one of the few small businesses that is still existing and trying to survive in this tough economy. Since 1999, Karina Cake moved to this location. The business has not expanded nor enlarged. The time has been changed. Since then, this business to survive needs some improvements, such as new technology and new equipments. What we are proposing for this site, still, is the minimum for this business to survive. New equipments, new technology, and the most, most better working ambient and environment for the employees and their room, for the lounge, lounge room for the employees. So the most improvement is to give better ambient, better atmosphere or working place for the employees. The project is proposing enlargement of the kitchen area, storage and employee lounge, which is a very modest and reasonable improvement for a workplace to have an updated kitchen and then amenity to workers to have a lounge room for the rest. We are not adding floor area for the customers or the sales area. This business to survive needs more workplace to respond to the needs of the community that it's in the service since 1999. Now it's time to be changed. Years ago, previously, in the past, all was manpower working on the bakeries. Today, the newer technology, new equipment that is there, which is more automatic and less work power needed, and we need more room to accommodate these new equipments there. The project, it's in a Zone C3 and two buildings on the site. In the front building, which is a commercial building, 2,830 square feet, which is a commercial building, 830 flower shop, 2,000 existing bakery, which from that 2,000 square feet bakery, 790 square feet is the kitchen and 1,210 square feet is the retail space, the customer service area. The second building, it's in the west side of the property in the rear, which it's, consists of the three residential units. One in the, on the ground level and two on the second floor. Which, this site and this residential unit, they have two non-conforming, substandard garages, which as staff mentioned, even, I don't know if it said so much usable, if they have big cars, they can accommodate the car there, but if it's a small car, maybe yes. And there are seven parking spaces for the commercial who's on the site today, which two of them is located in the front of the property, front of the business, and five of them are in the back of the building, in the rear of the property, which they don't comply with the today requirements, you know, the dimension-wise, the size-wise. And the site has no accessible parking, which one of the most important requirements today by the building and safety. Proportional improvement is very modest and reasonable for the, reasonable project, and it does not create a oversized or overused site. Proposed floor addition, it's only what we do, we are changing the floor use change for part of the building, the new floor area addition, it's 501 square feet, which looking to the plans, it shows that addition area, it's only for the walking cooler and walking freezer and the corridor that connects the existing kitchen to the proposed one, which that doesn't create any more traffic or money, any more clientele to walk in. It's just a storage area. And conversion of the residential unit and the storage area to kitchen and converting to existing non-conforming, substandard garages, which is not that much usable, to two parking spaces. In reality, from 1,587 square feet of floor area, adding and change of use to the bakery, only 608 square feet of that, which is the kitchen or working area, it's, let's say, it's needed to, you know, wash fork there. The remaining 979 square feet of this 1,500-something square feet, it's only for the storage area. Because today, the, these businesses and the custom or the consumption of these cakes, bakeries, it's so changed, they are ordering big cakes, which they need more storage area. So from the 1,500 square feet, a new floor area, only 608 square feet is the kitchen. 979 square feet, it's only the storage area. Please note, all these changes and additions are not increasing the customer and the sales area. Existing customer sales area, it will be, remain untouched. It will be just minor remodeling. The cabinets, freezers, coolers will be changed, the showcases, but the square footage-wise, it will be remain as it is right now. The intent of the proportion is to provide better, healthier, and safer working place for the employees. On the 600 or 700 square feet existing kitchen area, with four, five people working around with all this equipment, it's very tight. We are giving better and nicer, healthier workplace for two employees. Karina's clientele, it's already built, and the same patterns that come to the store, we hope they will, they will continue to come. Clients are already used to parking situation and condition that exists since 99. Karina would have not been successful if parking was a problem for the clients or the area. Since 1999, we never had a complaint or parking, for the parking situation. The parking study, which was done by an Office of Magarabian Associate, a traffic engineer, and submitted to the hearing officer, clearly indicate that there will be adequate, adequate parking for the existing and the proposed use of the site. Majority of employees, they walk or they use the public transportation and they, and even they carpool if it's needed. With, as mentioned, Karina's cake employee are local residents of Glendale, living in the surrounding area of the business, using public transportation, walking or carpooling. The project, its site, it's surrounded by residential zones. R1650 in the west side, across the street beside of the commercial strip of the Glendale Avenue. The back portion, it's Zone R2250. But looking to the existing buildings surrounding this site area, it's all built with the very previous zoning code. It's very congested. Today, it's Zone 1650, but the residential units that is built there, it's developed by R4 regulation, which it's 800 square feet lot area per unit. Such as we have on the Chestnut Avenue, a 22-unit residential building on 17,000 square feet lot area, which it gives me 800 lot area per unit, or on the Elk Avenue, 1,250 square feet. So this is a very congested residential area. And because of that, if you go to check, there is a site called Walker's Course, that they give the score, the area where the pedestrian or, you know, the, how the transportation is there. The Walker's Course site, it's giving a 92 score to this location. It means that a lot of people, they are walking in that area around for shopping or going around. And it's graded a good transit. If you check, it's included there, that it calls the Walker's Course paper, it's there. And the, I have the public transportation routes with the time schedule, that how many public transportation we do have. We do have the Beeline lines that's serving the area, and we do have the empty Metrolink lines, which it's three lines passing by the project site. So this is a location that the people, they can easily access by public transportation. The planning hearing officer decision to deny the request failed to take this and other facts in consideration. The proposal, it's very minimal improvement, that the business could be improved to working condition and keep up with the changing times and the need for the better, more effective workplace and equipments. Today, as it has been mentioned, if you look to this project as a totally new project, 22 parking spaces will be needed. But we are providing nine parking spaces. The site as it exists has a commercial building at the front with a small flower shop and a bakery, three residential units, and it's grandfathered with these nine parking spaces. Seven for the commercial and two for the residential units. We are eliminating one of the residential units. We are adding to the kitchen area, which doesn't create more traffic, more clientele to come to the business, just we are giving more opportunity to employees to work in a better place. And as just to did, to go into detail, we are changing the use of the 431 square feet of the residential unit to, to a kitchen as an additional workspace for existing bakery. Existing storage area on the ground floor will be incorporated. If you check the plans, there is existing storage area, not for the commercial use. It's for the building. We are incorporating that storage area to the, for the bakery. And open space between the two buildings that we are adding, about 501 square feet. Again, it will be used just for the storage, cooling, you know, walking cooler, walking freezer. Which these are all spaces that doesn't create more traffic to the site. The wanting, the business hours for the flower shop, it's 9 to 6 p.m. and the Karina's Cake House, its business hours are 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. Peak hours are 8 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. and 12 noon to 2 p.m. And in evening, peak hours are 5 to 7:30. The average turnaround of the parking use, it's 5 to 15 minutes. As most of the retail items are pre-packed, as you see from the name, Karina's Cake House, the mostly, you know, 85%, 90% of its products, it's cakes. It's prepaid, you know, pre-packed, and they, the customers, just they walk in. Most of the items are self-pickup, helps yourself, go take your item and go to the cashier and pay and go out. So the turnaround, it's five minutes, maximum to 15 minutes. And specialty cakes that are pre-ordered are delivered to the customers by an independent outside service on call basis. Or if it's picked up, are loaded from the rear of the building. The availability of the city parking facilities, the nearest city parking facility, it's about 0.6 mile from the site, which a lot of parking spaces is available there. And we are encouraging, or we notify, or we did talk with the employee of the Karina's Cake that there is such a parking space available, which is about half a mile away from the business, if they can use it. And even, there is a parking study done by the city, by Nelson Nigard.
Nigard.
Nigard, which even on that report, Nelson is calling that there is enough parking spaces in Glendale downtown. There is no need for additional parking space. And even, there is a lot of parking spaces on the Glendale Avenue, Lomita, Elk. There is enough parking spaces. And we did survey the parking situation for our site and the five, on-street parking spaces, which that survey is included in the package, that it says, it shows the availability of onsite and on-street parking spaces on 15 minutes interval. Always, there is a parking available. The hearing officer failed to give credit to primarily walking customers of the area and employees that they walk or they use the public transportation. This is a primary, it's a neighborhood retail business with many customers and employees living in the immediate residential vicinity and within an easy walking distance. As you see on the plans, it's surrounding by the residential. As you see on the plans, it's surrounding by the residential zone, and employees, they are, most of them, they are living in the just walking distance from the business, and the hearing officer didn't take into consideration this. It is also fact, the part of the, this part of the town along Glendale Avenue, it's very dense and already saturated. The fact is, there is no single existing use or business in the area that could enlarge or expand, that will not need additional parking or reduction in parking as required by code. To provide any additional spaces will truly be a hardship on any existing business. This is typically to almost every other similar businesses in the city. Even in cases where the bakery has literally zero onsite parking spaces, there are businesses, they don't have even one park, onsite parking spaces, but we are providing nine parking spaces. Karina Cake House has existed since 99 with the same condition and situation. We do not intend to increase our employees, nor expand to a much bigger operation. Everything being proposed, it's very minimal improvement that the business could do to improve the working condition for the health and safety of employees. Additional storage and keep up with the changing times that needs more modern equipments, safer and more up-to-date equipments. None of the proposed area will be result in additional customer spaces, additional retailer space, or drastic change in the workplace. I will try to cut short. I have a lot to talk, but the one thing that, again, one of the items that the hearing officer mentioned, that the city has no power of authority to check or control the future changes if this storage area to be changed to the, you know, customer area, but we know that in all of these approvals, it comes with the conditions, and the city can very clearly control these changes. And we are ready to accept all the conditions that the commission will put for approval of this project, that any changes in the future, we need the future, you know, further review and approval. And we are not trying to, and even looking to the floor plan, all this improvement is in the rear of the property, in the rear of the existing business, which is not easy access or is not appropriate for the customers to walk in. This is a just workplace, 600 square foot kitchen, 900 something square feet for the storage area. I'm cutting short because my time is over. I am here to answer to any question if you should.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions?
And just I want to add, if it will help, again, on the previous hearings, we submitted few signatures, the customers, that they are coming to this location, that they don't have any problem with the parking situation. I have maybe about 200 more signatures here that I submitted.
How many?
About 200-something signatures.
Let me sure.
Yeah, I am normally a pro-business, and I think business need to do whatever it can do to survive in this, in our fine city, and we need to support that effort. I think we, I raised this question, or the commission raised this question in the past, your proposal to increase the back area, the freezer area, is to accommodate increase in business activities for cake, making cakes. And you're stating that the demand for the parking will probably stay the same, there'll be walk-in businesses. I think walk-in customers are more for pastries, that I don't think they're gonna carry the big cake out on their foot. They'll probably bring their car into the property to carry off the big, large-sized cakes there. Is there something, I don't know if it's legally possible, but increase in work area also, there's a concern about potential increase in number of employees. Now, most of the employees, you said, is uses public transportation or walk-in employees. Is there some sort of covenant or some sort of agreement that you establish with the employee to sign such that, you know, they will use public transportation? And I don't know if this is legal or not, but, you know, is there something like that would have been placed so that you know for sure that there won't be any employee parking increase? Or actually, you know, the residential street parking, you know, the employees will not go there to park there, because in, around their area, in the downtown area, there's a shortage of parking spaces. I live there, I know, because I have to drive around 10, 15 minutes just to find a parking space. So, you know, that is something that I'm very concerned about.
Okay, the first part, that walking customers, they are for the pastries, the big cakes, they are not coming, you know, walking to pick up a big cakes. But these big cakes, which is not possible to carry on hands just walking, it has been, it is being delivered by a special service, on-call service, it's independent contractor, which they have these big cakes, which even that big cakes is not possible to carry on a sedan car. They need a van to carry on, which we provide this delivery system, delivery service to customers, to independent contractor. And this, Karina's, for the second part, for the employee parking, if I wish that you could go and check this business, why the Karina Cake is successful is not an industrial or just a mass production company, and they are using most like homemade cakes, pastry, that is the success. And the most of the employees that they work there, they are mid-age ladies, which they've been working there for the last 10, 12 years. They don't drive, even they don't have the driving license, but I know it's not a given fact that it will be remain. But the how the Karina runs his business, her business, it's to provide the best kind of mom-and-pop's, you know, homemade cakes to customers, and let's say, 80% of employees, they don't drive, they walk, or there is a just one person driving and carpooling other employee. But if the commission, the planning commission, commissioners, they would like to have an agreement that the employees, they won't drive, you know, we can do that, but it's not very practical issue.
I have a question to city attorneys. Can something like that be imposed, so, you know, have, you know, impose that the employer have some sort of agreement with the employee?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lee, we were just, in fact, discussing what is possible here. While it isn't a legal requirement that we can impose as a condition, it could be a condition that the applicant voluntarily agrees to impose on themselves and have that added, but that is certainly up to the applicant to do so. A certain percentage of the employees on a going-forward basis would be using public transportation or fashion in some sort of way. Also, I might want to note, because this was brought up, is that this parking reduction permit does not run with the land. And so, the conditions on that is that it says in the code 3050070, that insofar as the specific land use remains the same at the time of the permit issuance, including but not limited to the tenancy, the hours of operation, the clientele served, the goods or services offered, and mix of activities within the use. So, that's a backdrop to what is examined with respect to permit issuance. So, it really must be as proposed and as set forth in the permit that is before you for consideration. And then, again, if they wish to voluntarily impose a condition on themselves, that could be added to the list of conditions on this site.
So, in other words, Commissioner, here is the thing. If the use changes for whatever reason, they have to come back. If it's a denser use, they have to come back. So, imposing a theoretical reasonable or unreasonable employee drive or no drive, while I think would be a reference to a mini TDM, a traffic demand management, that maybe a lot of people do in downtown, a lot of, I mean, it's possibility, but really, your use, if your use changes, they have to come back. So, in other words, if that flower shop, that flower shop cannot turn into a hot dog stand for a denser use, they have to come back. Now, are you, were you done? Because I want to continue.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, thank you. So, here is what I did today. Today, I spent somewhere close about 45 minutes between 11:30 and 12:15, and I was smelling the good stuff in there, but I, you know, I'm observing lens, so I couldn't go in period. But having said that, I walked it. I parked right in front of it. There were three parking spaces on Glendale Avenue. There was no parking, there was no cars parked.
Five parking spaces on Glendale Avenue.
I saw three in front. I mean, I didn't go further south or further.
On the package that I submitted, there's a site plan that he chose five.
I have the floor. I have the floor. So, there was no issue with the parking on Glendale Avenue. I walked inside the property, there were only two cars parked, and this is about 11:30. Then I took that exit off to Chestnut and walked on Chestnut, and I counted, there were seven car spaces on Chestnut. Now, today, there was a trash pickup day, so some of the spaces were, you know, you had the trash bins and so forth. And I walked around the block, around the Catholic school, and off of Lomita. On Lomita, there were 14 parking spaces, and this is on a Wednesday noon time. Now, I did the same thing last time. It was, you know, altogether, there were about maybe 14 as opposed to the 19 that I just recited. So, there is off, there is on-street parking, there is no questions about that in my mind. And in fact, if you have your traffic study that you've done, to me, that's very relevant. I'll tell you where this trumps what Nigard did. Nigard was a drive-by. Your, this, this traffic study is done every 15 minutes, every 15-minute interval. So, that's the difference. I mean, that's, that's how, this, in my opinion, is a more comprehensive traffic study than Nigard. Nigard was done only on one day, and these guys have done it for several.
And only two hours, Nigard.
Well, yeah, whatever. So, from that point of view, as far as the street is concerned, I really don't think that that's going to be an issue as far as parking on-street is concerned. Now, let's talk about a tad, if you will, about the density of the use. You know, somebody wanting to add a cooler, a walking cooler, or a corridor to get to that cooler, for me to come out, and I know our code requires that, and this is why this body has got the discretionary, you know, allow us to sit down and actually discuss these things. For somebody to add cooler and for me to turn around and say, you know what, 100% this is going to add to the density of use, to me, that's unreasonable. It is like for me to buy a refrigerator, put it in my garage, and for the city to come out and require me to add another driveway to my car, to my house, because I want to feed more neighbors, and you gotta see my neighbors. I mean, we really feed them. So, there is no difference as far as that part is concerned. A cooler does not translate into folks or denser use. In this case, they have been very consistent from the last time that they were in front of us. Their position has been that we want to modernize, and we want to be able to deliver. There is a lot of walking traffic in there, you know, the Walk Score doesn't lie, and we need to really consider all of this. As far as that part is concerned, Mr. Chair, my position has not changed from last time. I argued and I articulated the same positions as I am doing today.
One second. Just to be clear, and I really appreciate what you just said, but let's stay within the four corners of our agenda in this matter. Right now, the applicant has made their presentation. I have two other cards from individuals who would like to speak in favor of the application. So, unless we have questions from the applicant's representative to clarify anything that they said and we didn't understand, or issues that we want addressed, let's do it now, and then let's go step by step according to the agenda.
I'm fine with going with other speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I have two cards. The first one is Susanna Yeremian.
Hi, Susanna Yeremian, 1249 South Orange Street, Glendale, California. I'm in full support of the project simply because I am one of the employees, and we do not have much issues with the parking. Our customers are very fast-paced. For the big cake orders, they don't just come in and pick it up themselves. We have to deliver it. They much rather have somebody deliver the cakes to them rather than coming in, picking it up, and damaging the cake. So, majority of the big wedding cakes, engagement cakes, it's just delivered. The other ones, for the pastries, it's like coming in, getting 10 slices of things and just walking out, like in a matter of two to three minutes. And then afterwards, it's just big, regular cakes, writes happy birthday, they leave. So, it's very fast-paced. You come in, you get out, and you get out. And then for the back area, as mentioned, if we add the cooler, it's gonna be much better for us as workers because we're gonna have more space to move in. Right now, things are so closed, and it's really hard to get in and get the pastries and get the cakes, so we need to modernize the space. We're not gonna have more customers. It's gonna be more safe for us rather than getting more customers, and it's just safety matters. That's what we're concerned about. So, I'm definitely in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The other card I have is from Hasmeen Zalyan. Did I say it right, I hope?
I used to be a customer for Karina's Cake House, and I lived in Glendale, 720 Stone Grove, Glendale, California, very close to the pastry. I used to walk, I used to drive, never had any problem, and I moved to Burbank, it's been already five years, and at least twice a week, I'm here to get the Karina's cake, and I'm here to fully support the project.
Very good. Thank you very much, ma'am. All right. So, with that, I will be closing the public hearing.
I think he has final, does he have a final?
Well, he has, well, applicant makes rebuttal, but.
Okay. I would still have questions for the applicant.
Well, given the fact that there was nothing to rebut, you have questions?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I wanted to hear the rest of the speakers before.
Okay. Go ahead, ask your questions.
I too walked around the neighborhood as Mr. Historian did, but two weeks ago, and I actually got off the bus, I take the bus occasionally on Glendale Avenue from work to where I live. So, I got off the bus near Lomita and walked around the neighborhood. And I always knew about how dense, or I heard about the density of this location, and I was interested to find more about, you know, the actual density volume, so I couldn't really find a good map about it. I did go on Census to print up a map myself, so I'm just gonna pass this out. And basically, what this shows, it's very simple. It's, the dark area shows density that has, it's broken up by census tracts, but it's basically density by any, any, the darker areas show. basically density by any, the darker areas show population of 20,000 people or more per square mile, or per this census tract, is the dark area. So, it's just showing, the dark area that has more than 20,000 people living there is darkened. So, you see in this area that all the density is really in the southeast corner, and not in the downtown area. So, my question, goes to my question. When I walked around the streets, I noticed that there's basically just free parking on Glendale Avenue. I think two-hour limits on a lot of it, and then free parking on the side streets in the neighborhood. There's some 30-minute zones. And I also noticed that, when I talked to some of the businesses, that they pointed out cars in front of their business, those cars having just parked there almost all day, and they belong to other residents, or, you know, maybe not quite business customers. So, have, now, in particular, there's a 20 or 30-minute zone in front of the flower shop, that's sort of wiped out.
Yeah.
Not on, I think, when the city did a remodel job of that sidewalk, they didn't fully paint the 30-minute. And the 30-minute seems like a really good idea to me, because it enforces people staying there for a short amount of time, or as much to come in and get your bakery. Have you looked into getting the 30-minute zones, or would you be interested in having something like that?
I am interested, and actually, I did look at it, and I am willing to approach to the city to ask to have the 30-minute, even 20-minute parking, it will be, because our parking study and our survey, it says the maximum is 15 minutes. So, yes, I am interested for that, to go to ask for the half-hour or 20-minute parking in the front of the business. And the one thing that, because of the shortage of them, I couldn't talk about it, looking to aerial photo, this block, next to this building, there is another big, you know, retail building, which they have a big parking spaces available for their own businesses. So, that five parking spaces available on the Glendale Avenue, it's mostly available. And if the bakery customers, they park there, I am one of the customers. I go there just because I have to stay there to say hi to Karina. It doesn't take more than 15 minutes for me to buy and stay there to say hi to Karina and come out. So, I am looking for that half-hour parking spaces. We are interested in this.
Right. And the other thing is, like, downtown benefits not only from limited parking, but like meters, and the meters can go and pay for the street services in the area. I was surprised that this area of Glendale, which is the densest area in the whole city, has essentially free parking. And that encourages people to stay there for a long period of time, people who aren't going to be customers of your business. And it seems to me, when I went back and I started reading all these Nelson-Nygard studies, and maybe we can, I can continue this after you close the public hearing, because, you can go ahead and sit down, because I don't have a question. But I went back and started...
Okay, if you don't have any question, let's get on with the agenda. We now need to close the public hearing on this matter.
Unless Commissioners Landrigan or...
Do you have any questions?
I would, I would like the planning staff to respond to, I mean, if anybody has a rebuttal, the planning staff heard the presentation here, and I would like to hear their response to the presentation.
Very good. Is there any specific points that you would like to respond to?
At this point, if you'd like me to highlight the summary of the planning hearing officer's decision, which is presented by bullet point on page three of your staff report, I can do that.
Well, if it's in our staff report...
In your staff report.
We are assumed to have reviewed it. Beyond that, any statements that were made by the applicant, is there anything that was...
No, not at this time.
Very good.
I have a question for the planning staff.
Go ahead.
In the Nelson-Nygard report for that parking study that was done in 2010, it mentions that the reasonable parking occupancy rates, where the target should be around 85%. Is that, is that what you understand as well?
Yes, but I would also defer to our deputy director regarding the question.
I haven't read the entire Nelson-Nygard study. I know 85% utilization is considered to be basically full utilization. I'm not sure it's a target.
Well, my understanding was that it was like an ideal scenario, to get around 85%. Because either below that, or if you're too below that, then your parking essentially is so free that, or, no, it's so costly that people can't, you know, people just don't want to park. And if it's too above that, then your parking is so free that it doesn't allow opportunity for people to move out. But the parking here, I guess the utilization rate is around, it hovers around 79% in that area. It's 79%, and then if you go south, it's around 100%. Is that, is that correct?
I would assume so, but I don't have facts in front of me.
I think it was in the...
Correct.
I was just talking about what was in the report that you showed.
Based, based on the facts that were submitted in the Nelson-Nygard letter, as stated in my decision letter...
Yeah.
It specifies that Glendale Boulevard, between Lomita Avenue and Chestnut, varied less than 50% before 10:00 AM and after 4:00 PM, to approximately 70, up to 79% during 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. And this would be just the block directly in front of the Karina's Cake House.
Right.
The on-street parking spaces along Glendale Avenue to the block directly south of the project site was occupied 100% of the time, based on the Nelson-Nygard study.
Right.
But by south, you mean south of Chestnut?
South of Chestnut, correct.
South of Chestnut, okay. So, it's 100% south, and then 79% north.
Correct. And then 80, and the block to the north was occupied typically, it was 80% and above.
Right. Now, when you made your findings, what, the findings basically show that there's a shortage of the parking in the area. And if we don't grant them parking, it'll exacerbate the shortage. So, what is, where is the shortage that you're talking about, based on those figures that you showed?
My decision letter...
Yeah.
Specifically calls to the proposed use, and the amount of the addition, additional area, as well as the mix of uses on-site, and the existing parking on-site.
Right.
So, would you like me to briefly summarize my decision letter for you?
No, no, I'm just...
In a few sentences, I'd be more than happy to do so, but...
So, the shortage you're talking about is on the on-site?
I'm talking about, yes, the shortage on-site of parking...
Okay.
With the expansion of the business, 44%, plus the mix of existing uses on-site, and the lack of any residential parking on-site, has the potential to exacerbate. And in the decision letter, we deal with the potential negative and detrimental impacts to the surrounding community. And that is what we're trying to safeguard by having a required parking amount.
So...
We're dealing with the deficit in this case.
Now, do we take into consideration, like, the preferential parking? That we've streamlined over the years for neighborhoods surrounding these business sites could apply and get preferential parking, so they would not be essentially affected by any parking spillover? How do we take that into consideration when we make this decision, as far as how a parking shortage may affect the surrounding neighborhood?
Again, if there was a preferential parking situation in the immediate area, I would take a look at that, but there is none. There is...
But they could, they could...
They could, but we're looking at existing, at existing conditions.
Existing conditions, okay.
Correct.
Let's not devolve this into hypotheticals. The hearing officer had the facts that she had in front of her, and she made her ruling based on those facts. So, did I misspeak?
No.
Okay. So, let me take a long step back. At the end of the day, how many parking spaces do they have on their property right now?
Right now, they have seven.
After they're done doing whatever it is they want to do, how many will they have?
Nine.
Okay.
So, they will have, they have three existing residential units, they will have two at the end of the day. They have a total of, the existing bakery is 2,300 square feet, give or take. It's being expanded 44% to 3,500, or close to 3,000, or 3,600 square feet. And then the existing flower shop will remain as is. So, and again, we took, you know, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding the walkability, and that, again, boiled down to the fact that they are expanding their use specifically geared towards specialized cakes. And as someone previously stated, I don't know which Commissioner, the walkability, based when you're trying to have a cake...
It's not an issue.
It's not really an issue, and...
That's, that's having your cake and eating it too, right?
That's having your cake and eating it too. Yeah. And we definitely, you know, staff is all pro, you know, business development and keeping businesses and whatnot, but we also want to take a look at the facts of making sure that there's adequate parking on-site, and not, you know, not having any impacts to the surrounding community. And based on the existing parking situation and the proposed expansion, based on also the use itself and what it's geared towards, we felt that we weren't able to make all the required positive findings in order to grant the parking reduction.
Any other questions from the staff? All right. Then, we are really done now, and we can start deliberating. Commissioners, may make any comments, any discussions, question?
I think it was about a week ago, there was a development down in deep south Glendale, and the staff recommendation on it, it was near the Tropical Station there, the staff recommended a reduction in parking for this development, because that area had characteristics of a downtown location, and it was close in proximity to major transit lines. This area, with the amount of density it has, and the two transit lines that run along Glendale Avenue, seems to have also characteristics of a downtown. The two transit lines run 15 minutes, every 15 to 20 minutes. I take it almost daily to work. When I looked at the Nelson-Nygard study from back in 2010, it talks about what a major transit facility is, and it defines it as, a major transit facility is defined as a bus stop that serves both local and regional transit with a net 15-minute peak hour headway. That's the definition that the Nelson-Nygard study does. It doesn't say it's only just, it's only limited to just rail, but it mentions bus stop and rail. Along Glendale Avenue, the 90 and 91 both do that. When I talk to the businesses on Glendale Avenue, and I talk to the employees, the employees don't drive there, they either take the bus, or they get carpool. Most of the time, they actually get carpool by their husband or their wife, because of the parking, because they live so close, first of all, and then also because they can use the bus, they can walk there, or they can, they just get driven there, and they don't want to deal with the parking. So, that's number one. What the Nelson-Nygard study says is, among a lot of the recommendations, it's just a huge study, and it's a really good study, I recommend everybody to just really read this. It talks about some parking management goals that the city should look at. And one of the top ones is how we should, one of the goals, it says, manage parking facilities with the focus on maintaining availability, not simply increasing supply. Because I think the understanding is, the more we are encouraged to just increase for the sake of increasing, we are encouraging people to just drive there. So, if there, if there is an abundance of parking at this site, then the employees will more likely to just drive there themselves, and not have to take carpool, or take the bus, or to walk there. Now, in this specific case, I was, number one, most surprised that, for the amount of density and for the characteristics of this being a downtown area, in terms of just numbers alone, and the walkability of it, that we essentially allow free parking on Glendale Avenue, so we encourage people to stay there for a very long time. I think that's either businesses not pushing for it in that area, or it's a failure on our side for not identifying this place as a, you know, an area that we want to maintain availability, more so than just pushing for an increase. So, I think there's a lot of room for improvement of how we manage the existing parking there. That's, that's another point. The third point is, the area south of Chestnut, the Nelson-Nygard says it's 100% occupancy rate. So, one thing that leads to that is probably the free parking that's available on Glendale Avenue. But another thing I observed when I talked, when I went around the businesses, is that the shopping centers that have parking in the back, that's supposed to be used for the retail businesses, but for some, the owners of the shopping centers essentially lease out their entire parking lots to dealerships, so they can stock up on their parking. So, a few businesses I spoke to, they said, we don't get any parking behind our stores, which we should, we're only supposed to park on the street. So, that 100% makes sense in that regard, that this is happening south of this business, not, and it's not because of this owner, and it's not because of this problem. It's, 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 it's problems that other owners south of this are exacerbating, based on things that they're doing, which I'm not sure if it's legal or not. But I think that should be considered as far as the whole parking study and the availability there. I agree with Mr. Historian's assessment earlier, as far as this is a small addition, it seems not reasonable to not allow for this to happen because of the parking requirements. It makes it cost prohibitive if we, if we require the amount of parking we do for a 500-square-foot addition and a change of use to an office use, because it'll prevent businesses in that area from wanting to make the smaller additions and growing. In downtown areas, we do everything we can to usually try to encourage more business from happening, to happen, by minimizing the barriers as much as possible. I think this is an area that maybe this could be used as a first example, to look at the entire, the entire area of how we can maybe move forward of encouraging more business expansion, reasonable expansion with the kind of parking that we want to require. So, I do sustain the kind, the decision I wanted to make last time, which was approving this, and I want to approve it now for those reasons.
Very good. Ma'am?
I would like to hear Mr. Lee.
No, I'd like to hear from you first.
All right. Well, I think the issue at hand is not the street parking, or the city subsidizing any expansion of any, any private lot. To me, you know, I believe that you are responsible for what you do on your property, and providing what the city code has already assessed is the necessary element for us to live in a community, and to live in a community where there is fair application and fair... and to live in a community where there is fair application and fair expectation. If I add square footage to my house, 500 square feet, and I say, "It's only going to be an office, so there's not going to be anybody else. I don't need to add another car," that would not be approved. And that's no different than this, except that in all reality, it could be used for someone else. I could have somebody come live with me indefinitely, and I would impact the neighborhood. But I will have gotten away from the parking requirement because I proposed that its use superseded what the community need was. And to me, I find that not to be the way that we should be deliberating on the uses that are being proposed. Every, it is a self-imposed hardship. Yes, it is a hardship, but we impose it on ourselves by choosing to not move or not find a place, and to test the waters. I would also say that it has already reduced parking. It already does not meet any codes. Even adding two more does not address the real need of what is there. It is not about the parking study that Nelson-Nygard did. It is about the use on this property. And as much as I truly respect all the work you've done, Commissioner Yessin, and I do, and I totally agree with you that walkability is important. I do know that it has very little to do with the kind of business that a cake place would have. You might pick up a pastry or two, but if we look at Porto's, which is just a bakery, and it also has so many people coming into it, and it has pre-made cakes, and it's impacted all the time. I mean, even there, and there's tons of city parking that subsidizes it. The reality is, is that this use is being changed. It's being added to. It has every right to do it, but it also has every right to make sure that all of the requirements that we feel make our city work are installed at the same time. We would not let somebody come in and say, "I want a smaller sewer because of this," or... And the infrastructure of our parking and our street parking is just as important to protect as it is to protect our sewers and our water systems. And for that reason, I feel that this is not a reasonable request. It is already far below 10. It's more than, you know, 60% short of what, it is 60% short of what it should have. And to me, if there were parking reductions that are made in other places, they are not for 60%. They are made on a reasonable basis and on a reasonable use. This does not seem to meet that criteria for me. And I, as previously felt, that the individuals should not supersede the community desires and expectations that we have in the zoning code for us to live together in harmony. And to me, that is the superseding dictate here. I can't make a decision that favors one over what we have set as the desire to run our community in a fair and just way.
Well, you heard her. You have no excuses.
Yeah, this is a, this is difficult in that I hear Commissioner Historian's reasoning that this is not really, you know, intensifying the use or adding the space for customer use. I see that. And I also see Commissioner Landrigan's point in that, you know, how much of it is reasonable. You know, when you ask for more spaces than what you have, almost double, you know, that's, that's extreme. So, I'm really torn. You know, this place is not an eight-and-nine where people are going to stay there for hours. So, I may be leaning towards overturning the decision if there are conditions self-imposed. I think that's one of the things that, you know, the applicant can do, to enter some sort of agreement with the employee, to just make them honest. And then have Commissioner Yessin stated that maybe some sort of a time zone parking in front of the property, so that there is a fast turnover there. I do, you know, so, you know, what, you know, which weighs more? I do think it is a self-imposed hardship, but at the same time, you know, it's not really detrimental to the welfare of the surrounding neighbors. If these things are taken, the steps are taken to mitigate these problems, then the business has right to improve their services, you know, actually for, to serve the community with the better capacities. So, if those parameters are included in the, in our decision, then I'll be leaning towards going with Commissioner Yessin and Commissioner Historian.
Just to clarify, could you articulate those self-imposed conditions again?
Well, one is that, you know, we, I asked the city attorney if, we cannot impose those conditions, but they could voluntarily say that they could enter into some sort of an agreement and propose to the city that they will enter into a agreement with their employee to make sure that they will not add intensity in the use of the parking spaces. And the other one was the Commissioner Yessin's condition that some of those areas on the, on the street has the time limit, like 30-minute limited parking requirement. Something like that, I think, might, I believe, you know, will mitigate some of the, or just create the people who like to park there for hours.
Actually, the suggestion was to put 20 minutes on Glendale Avenue.
Oh, 20 minutes, okay.
Or whatever, there's an existing limit right now, and it's like 30, 20 minutes. So, whatever that is.
Whatever that is, yeah.
Yeah, to be extended.
I have a question to the city attorney. Can the commission recommend to traffic that they alter parking to support a non-conforming expansion as we are proposing to do?
Members of the commission, Commissioner Landrigan, the planning commission can certainly make recommendations to the Transportation and Parking Commission or to the department to examine issues related to parking as it impacts land uses and land use decisions that are coming before the planning commission. I don't necessarily think it appropriate to make a request in relation to an expansion of a, of a non-conforming use, but certainly in more generalized terms, you know, ask that commission and/or department to, to examine those issues because they are relevant to the planning commission's decision. That would certainly be appropriate. The condition that was, the condition that was recommended would be something that the applicant couldn't guarantee it could fulfill. They could certainly endeavor to obtain modification to the parking limits on certain streets, but it certainly couldn't be guaranteed. And that, that would be subject to the approval of the Transportation and Parking Commission, et cetera. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Just one observation, if I may. I don't want to overstay my welcome.
Oh, it's too late for that.
Look, all we need to do is to literally walk, as I did today in at least a couple of streets. We can take any street in City of Glendale. Our housing stock is old. The parking rarely ever matches the number of the units or what have you. So, by that definition, we are subsidizing everybody in City of Glendale, most old housing stock and commercial stock in City of Glendale. The fact remains that a street parking is a street parking. It is not only for the business. It's for first come, first served, and they leave, and they come and go. And it's as simple as it is being done today. Let's not forget for a moment, by the way, this self-to-note, note to self, that in downtown, a change of use, we used to have it on the books, that if it was up to 2,000 square foot, if you were to change the use, it would not trigger any parking requirement, additional parking requirement. We've gone up to 5,000 square feet. Perhaps we should look at that in the context of the South Glendale Plan and the Glendale Avenue and so forth as well. That's, just wanted to put that out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My pleasure. Now, I would like to make some comments. First of all, I really don't like self-imposed conditions. The purpose of the exercise is for the applicant and the city to come to an agreement on conditions which are workable, which are enforceable, which someone can point at and demand corrections, and a legal process is afforded to both the applicant as well as the city to enforce the conditions or seek relief from them or some sort of redress. So, that is my personal opinion, and that's all it is. As far as the meat of the decision, knowing the hearing officer for as long as I know her, I know she looked at the facts in front of her, and she applied the ordinance as best as she could. And strictly speaking, chances are, one could argue very convincingly, that she's right. But communities don't start and stop by a watch. There's always ebb and flow. There's always some sort of crossover. We can't expect all buildings that were built according to one set of ordinances and one set of zoning conditions to miraculously evaporate and go away so we can start anew with this great new idea that we have. No. You know, we have the buildings that we have. As time goes on, they're going to go their own way, and we're going to build new buildings. And when we do, we will apply new ideas and a new approach. But in the meantime, we have the old buildings, we have the old neighborhoods, we have the old conditions, and we have to make do. We have to make certain compromises. We have to make certain allowances and move forward. I've always wanted to approach this as a group of neighbors trying to help each other out without necessarily constantly pointing at the letter of the law, despite the fact that the letter of the law is, in many regards, sacrosanct. Not always. Sometimes we have to close one eye. So, which is why I went to my original question. How many parking lots are we talking about? At a certain point, we are talking about how many angels fit on the head of a pin? Studies and things way over my head. At the end of the day, what are we talking about? Were we fine yesterday? Yes, how many parking lots did we have? Seven. How many will we have tomorrow? Nine. So, where is the problem here? We have a strict, we have an increase of square footage. You're right. But they're going to put a refrigerator there. Are more people going to run in there to buy their cakes? For their sake, I hope so. But let's not overplay our hand. With that, I'm willing to accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll read the motion into the record. That upon review and consideration of all material exhibits of current record relative to parking reduction permit case, PPRP 1324113 located at 515 South Glendale Avenue, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby reverses the planning, the hearing officer's decision respectfully, and approves said parking reduction permit case number, PPRP 1324113, and the court would revise findings and conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Aye. Aye.
Yes. Moving on, do we have any planning commission items? I understand that we do not.
We do not.
Very good. Do we have any community development department updates?
We do not.
Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
I do. I just wanted to say that this, and I believe some of you were there, I saw you over the weekend, Cesar Chavez's, the Memorial Day at Pacific Edison, and of course, it was the unveiling of the turf, the soccer field. What a magnificent soccer field that is, seriously. I mean, I know it was making for about three years or so, but it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. The event itself was very well attended. It was great. And it's great to be part and parcel of a community that is so diverse, that really looks into and celebrates diversification as well as accomplishments from diversified population. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not at all. I would like to take a moment. First of all, I ran a terrible meeting today, and I apologize. We veered off the topic, but please, in the future, if we are talking about questions from the staff or the applicant, let's stick to questions. We will deliberate, deliberate when the time to deliberate comes. And again, I apologize for being sharp, but please, let's not have hypotheticals. Let's say what we want to say. Let's ask the questions that we want to ask. And taking my own advice, not pontificate. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.
I do, we have to have one more announcement. I'd like to remind everybody that the Verdugo Mountain Ten-K Run is on Sunday, May 4th, and it's a walk and run, and it raises money for the Open Space and Parks Foundation, which then provides funding and work to areas that are not funded by the city. So, we would love to have you come. It's on the city's webpage, and it's going to be a really great event. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Can I adjourn now?
No, I have a comment.
You guys want to prove me right, don't you? I do run terrible meetings. Go ahead, talk.
Mr. Chair, there is student ambassadors, 12 student ambassadors that were chosen from Toll Middle School and Roseman Middle School. They will be visiting South Korea. This is part of the student exchange program that the Korean students, in average, about 30 to 40 students come and visit Wurson, Toll, and Roseman every year. In return, two years ago, we had 10 students from Roseman and Wurson went to Korea as an ambassadors. an ambassadors, and they really enjoyed the cultural exchange and educational exchange. This time, we're taking 12 students from these two schools, and I'll be going out there with them. It's from April 18 through 26. So I'll be here for the, I think, 17th meeting or 16th meeting, but right after that, I'll be going to Korea. So, you know, if you have a chance to communicate with Dr. Livingston, or your card of those two schools, you know, say, say good words, and wish us, you know, safe trip to Korea.
Commissioner Lee, this is to South Korea, correct?
South Korea.
Thank you.
And, and I told Mr. Kim not to shoot a missile.
Very good. We are adjourned.